I understand that Chief Smith has to be someplace. So after public input, is any public input in the management room with the new business of the MOU operations plan next?
Sure.
Sure. And then the other thing I'd like to move, we have unfinished business, the snow removal, I'd like to move that to non-public. So, any public input?
Can I speak for one minute at the end of the night? Is that possible? Just before you go into non-public? Can I reserve one minute at that point?
The board's pleasure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the MOU, the Littleton School Emergency Operations Plan. I guess who's going to speak to them? The chief or who's speaking?
Have our two gentlemen here this evening to speak to that. Al will also have done most of the work with the emergency operations plan along with Greg. So maybe Chief Smith speak first since I think he's got some place to go pretty soon.
The one thing I would state, I have this here, I don't want to mention any names.
What is that?
That's a proposal.
Okay.
It's a proposal, I like to not mention a name.
I'm here just more for comment. But the fire chief is emergency management director. It's my job to support his operations and emergencies as the director, and I guess I'm just the assistant. He has a vast amount of more experience than I do in this field. And so also I've been working with Greg and Al as far as developing the school's emergency operations plan, which is mandated. You're supposed to have one in place, but I can tell you since my appointment in 2007 there hasn't been a final document in place. It's been evolving however, because of leadership changes, it just has never been finalized. So I'll leave it at that. I'm just hearing more of us, of resource and anything else, and he got me for at least a half an hour or so. I'll let whoever's proposing this to go first.
Mr. Ray, do you have any comments at this point?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to say is that there's going to be a new policy coming up, and I've read through this here, but our policy says it's going to have to be reported to the Department of Education, proposed to the Department of Homeland Security. We haven't finalized it yet, but just to make you aware.
Just letting you know, the template that we've been following, the new template of April 2016 from the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. The template is about 200 pages long, and includes anything you would hope an emergency plan would include. We've been working on it internally for about a year and a half. Many of us did attend a workshop in Whitefield that was designed for school systems to attend. So we've been plugging away at this for, again, for a long period of time, and this is a newer version. The chief is absolutely correct, he's gone through a number of plans over the years. And I think it's at this stage, this stage in the game, we're looking for some support from some contracted service if you will. And the town also engages in a contracted service to help them develop their plans, and we want to be consistent. I think it's critical that our plans communicate well with each other, and I think it makes a lot of sense in another way as well, because these plans always have to be updated, and it only makes sense that they could be updated together, because we do utilize similar resources, of course. So we realize at this stage, we really would benefit from some assistance to finalize this plan.
All right.
And the contract outlines what is done for the contract fee. It starts at the bottom of the first page, and you can see it's continue the communication between police, medical facilities, fire, evacuation sites, and of course, work in evacuation site. So it's critical that we're on the same page as the fire department, police departments. Goes on to say, you know, there's an inventory of available assets, I think is important. And I think from a business side of it, and this is part of the plan as well, if you're using our facility for a shelter, we're going to be using some of our resources, and that has to be managed and inventoried. So at the end of that emergency, there's a reimbursement phase, so that's critical. And then, just to outline, there's 15 emergency support functions that have been identified that will be worked on as well. So this person will bring people together, obviously the school personnel is still going to be very involved, but is talking about an additional six to eight meetings, that's what this person thinks will take to finalize, write, edit, prepare the plan for final publication, prepare quarterly reports for the district, provide hard copies of the plan, of course, which should be in various places around town. And I think most importantly, be involved in any updates that need to occur. And I guess I'll ask the two chiefs, because they've been very involved, certainly when I, and this is how, you know, for our sense, when we're asking for assistance with this, certainly the two chiefs, in my opinion, have much more experience around emergency management, and they sought some assistance as well to get this plan done. It is very timely.
Coming from an emergency management perspective, the services of the contractor were indelible. Contractor did exactly what Mr. Smith said, but more. Contractor was able to take all our information, put it into a cohesive, simplified working document. What was important here is to understand that during a time of emergency, it's critical that people know what actions they need to take, and there's times when there's a lot of confusion. This consultant helped us on the town level to take our emergency response plan and to make it into a very simplified, easy-to-follow checklist type of plan, which not only meets state requirements, but meets federal requirements. As a matter of fact, because of the work we did on this plan, our template has now become the template throughout the state because of the simplification of use. This person does all of your typing, this person puts all the segments of the plan together, this person has in-depth experience in other communities, so she or she brings to the table lots of resources, lots of experience, lots of examples of what other communities are doing. I can tell you, we've used this contractor on three separate occasions, most recently to update a hazard mitigation plan for the second time around, and we'll be utilizing the services of the same contractor sometime in February or March to upgrade our town's emergency response plan. I encourage you to bring this contractor on board.
Okay.
This contractor will help manage the plan, will oversee the plan, will notify you of any state or federal mandates, will go ahead and make those changes for you, supplying with updated indexes for your plan, and keep you on track until the next time you're ready for a revision.
Sounds good.
Well worth, well worth the investment.
Is part of the agreement the ongoing notification without extra fee? I mean, is there an extra fee for the continual, once the plan is done, is there an extra fee to keep everything updated? Notifications?
It's usually within the amount of the contractor amount.
Right.
Yes. We pay her a fee, she hosts, for us, she held at least nine meetings, and nine long meetings, and basically, and a lot of phone conversations and a lot of emailing back and forth. But basically, now when it comes time for an upgrade, as Mr. Smith stated, there's quarterly reporting requirements, she will prepare that quarterly report, send it to you for review, you go ahead and approve it, and basically she'll forward it on your behalf. Those reporting requirements either go on state, federal, or both of those.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
No.
Okay. You want to vote on that later or just?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll probably vote on that later then, to know what it is. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the October 16th school board meeting.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any corrections or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Cool the minutes of the work session of October 23rd. Do you have a second? Any corrections or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the November 2nd reading.
So moved.
Second. My turn. Any corrections, omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Want to manifest or file a millio there? Do you want to do the grants report or treasures report?
The treasurer's report. The treasurer has a report.
Yeah. You all said what?
He asked me to review it with you. Sign your drive. The only two items of note this month are the receipts from the town are a little lower than usual. If you recall, we had three checks that we received in September because of the way the calendar falls, so in October we only received one. So everything is on schedule in the way it's supposed to be. We run them, we typically do them for the Friday before your meetings, and you had five Mondays last month. The other item is, we did receive half the building aid during the month of October.
Okay.
So that's on track too. Not on your agenda, but based on some conversations we've had previously, on the drive you'll find 4.1 budget adjustment. We've had some conversation about out-of-district tuition, exceeding the budget. Given the column that's marked current budget balance shows that I'm over budget in the two tuition lines. I have a significantly favorable variance in the elementary teacher salaries line because of all the other changes that have occurred after the budget was prepared. So I'm proposing that we take $36,600 from the salary line and spread it amongst the two tuition lines to bring them back into balance.
Okay, so doing your motion to move $36,600 out of the teacher salary lines, right?
Yes.
And put them into the two tuition lines.
Tom, do you feel that's going to be sufficient for the rest of the budget?
That I won't speculate.
Probably not.
We hope, we hope, but based on information that is coming in, it's unlikely. That'll do.
It serves the immediate needs.
So if another need arises, you can still use this teacher salary line?
Well, yes, there's still $99,90 there, so it's...
Is that typical? I mean, we...
No.
I think so. I remember doing that.
You had a number of retirements.
I know why it's there.
One was not replaced. And so it's, there's a lot of churn this year in the personnel payroll lines.
Any further questions, Tom? Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Do the grants report or is...
I can certainly entertain any questions, discussion. The document that Paul prepared for us, it was in the drive for a few days. I did neglect to mention that into my memo to you yesterday, calling your attention to him. I'm sure you found it there, hopefully you got a chance to look at it. He just included the, what the grants are being used for, some detail of the activities that are being funded through the grants. Title I is pretty cut and dry, most of Title I goes directly to salary for teachers that are providing Title I services to children K-6. We used to be in a program, priorities set aside, which allowed us to retain 10% of Title I funds and use them as part of the SIG process. That is no longer the case since we're not a SIG school. So all the Title I funds then will be kept within the traditional Title I programs, and hopefully there'll be a little bit to carry over. We haven't, we've been able to not spend all those funds from year to year to carry some over year to year, not a lot, a few thousand dollars, but the bottom line is, at this point, it's self-supporting. Title II is a federal program that's specifically aimed at improving teacher quality, and one of those that if you follow the federal budget at all, the federal budget discussions, education budget discussions is one that's come under the scrutiny a little bit. A lot of money goes into Title II, and so some questions are being asked. But that being said, this year our allocation is a little over $80,000, and we've spent about a little over a third of that at this point. And we're, again, trying to be, you know, discriminating on what we are using these funds for. You see some of the things we're doing. Most of them are directly, most of the activities are directly tied to either competency-based education, the socio-emotional learning, or universal design. Even those that don't stand right out, certainly training with a teacher's brain and mind is clearly a universal design activity, was Title I teachers. Comptancy-based education program, project, we'll see there, and so on. Included some, if you look at this document, you mentioned Title II, 2016, 17. Those were simply some of the activities that were entitled to a 2016, 17, that we, again, have cleaned those, that particular fund out. So all of our previous year's funds are pretty much spent, and we're spending only in the current year funds. A lot of emphasis here on math, quite a bit, quite a few, quite a few dollars put toward making, helping with UDL and some other things as well, some technology and so on.
Steve, at some point, do you think it's possible to get some more detailed updates on how some of these things are going?
Sure.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. I think you're gonna, I think you'll see, you mean like UDL and...
Yeah, like the...
...conservation education.
...the property base project, because that seems to be taking a big chunk...
It is.
...of staff and...
Some of that will come, frankly, will come through the presentation Thursday, because a lot of emphasis by, from both principles on those three, but certainly we can do follow-up, absolutely. The curriculum advisory council, by the way, will meet tomorrow again, so that will be, you know, focusing on those three areas will be something we do then as well. But absolutely, I think that's what we say that we're doing, and I'd like to, certainly I'd like to make sure that everybody, that you all have a chance to hear from the teachers So I hope you can see as you read through, there's some rhyme, some reason, some focus, some structure, it's not a bunch of random stuff. It's pretty much tied to the things that we said that we need to focus on, particularly with the last couple of years.
I think next on the agenda is committee reports, any personnel reports?
Will we soon, we should talk afterwards, schedule immediately, I think.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Facilities, any comments?
Any comments, Greg?
Well, we talked about current concerns, and we talked about the, we actually got a review of the fire reports which are coming up, and we just admitted a chief varsity review of the facilities. We did talk a little bit about the budget and different items that are in it for facilities. I know you sent a message to me earlier about some of that regarding the budget. We talked about the needs of both the gym at the high school and the gym at Daisy Bronson. We really didn't, we didn't discuss anything in particular as far as what we were, you know, setting as priorities of what we were at this point. It was more of less kind of assessing where we are as we've gotten into the school year, and then I think our next facility meeting will be really more tied to what we as a board are looking to do with the budget, and whether or not we're going to need to take a hard look at a few items and push them on or find another option to fund them.
All right, policy, we did have a long meeting. We could go, we have several policies, but I think the changes are still being worked on, so hopefully for the next meeting they'll be brought forward. And I think we have another meeting in two weeks or something close to that.
Sure.
What can you do? Next week.
Next week.
Yeah.
Two weeks, one day.
Yeah, it was two weeks, we didn't have time. All right, superintendent's report.
I guess the big news is that Tom and I came from the tax rate setting meeting, and unlike a year ago when we were, I guess, a little bit stunned, surprised, disappointed when we saw the tax rate come out, and probably everybody's dismay, it went up a huge, huge figure, buck seventy thereabouts on the school side. This year it's a modest, and I do want to emphasize modest, decrease, but it is a decrease of a couple cents on the tax rate, so at least it, at this point, has plateaued just a little bit. Karen Noyes, others as well, I think it's worth noting, wanted to make sure that I passed on to the board, she thanked Tom there in person, but to thank the board as well for our work, your work, in working with the town, working with the various budgeting fiscal authorities, and doing the best that we could to, you know, to at least mitigate the effects of the drop in valuation, because frankly, that's where we are right now. We have a, we have an assessed valuation that while it didn't drop anything like it did a year ago, when it dropped like a rock, it still went down a little bit. And so when you have, when you have rising costs, a couple of lowering evaluations, and people not wanting to pay more taxes, and we can't blame them for that, then it presents a difficult situation. Overall, the town tax rate will be down a bit as well, the state school tax rate for Littleton was down a little bit as well, the county will be up just a little bit. At the end of the day, the tax rate will be lower, so that's good news. We had some successful teams this fall. I think if you look at our sports activity, didn't want to recognize those, we just had a team participate Saturday in state championship game. Unfortunately, once again, our boys soccer team came up a bit short, got all the way to the finals, and didn't quite get over the hump this year either. That's the bad news. The good news is, it was really warm this year compared to last year. We could sit in the stands with a light jacket on and be very comfortable. It was a great day. They had four games there that day, starting with ours and three more to follow ours, so I think that was probably a very, very nice event for the state. But I want to congratulate them. Golf, our golf team placed fourth at state this year as well. If you follow the scores of the golf team on the, through the state side, through the newspapers, you'll see that they won a fair amount of tournaments this year, did very well. And of course, our girls soccer, after a 1-4 start, ran off eight or 10 wins in a row before unfortunately falling in the state playoffs. But I think that we can say with some confidence that those programs were successful. Field hockey made a successful transition as well from JV into varsity sports. So just wanted to touch those a little bit, and then while we're in the, while we're on the topic of activities and so on, we do have, do you want to remind people of School Musical this week? Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday matinee, Saturday evening. So that's something that I know everybody will be enjoying, taking part of. It's going to be a crazy week, as a father of one of the participants in the play, I can vouch for the craziness that will be this week, and how glad everybody will probably be once it comes to its conclusion on Saturday. But I think that, again, the presentation, if anything goes, ought to be an excellent, excellent activity. Driver's education, Mike is preparing for a third session, fourth session, which session will be on now, Tom? This is, help me out, Jennifer.
Third.
Third, this is just the third session, I guess, that we're about to embark upon. I do want, I do want to thank Littleton Chevrolet, again, as our car sponsor, they'll continue to sponsor the car through the end of this school year, so that's excellent news. And I have asked Tom to put together some figures, we don't have those, none of the things is in for the night, but we will report in the near future, because I think what we said was that we want this program to be kind of a break-even program as much as possible, and I think we're, I think we're probably running in that, certainly running in that zone in pretty good shape at this point. So, yeah, we're happy to continue to have the use of the car, and we're serving lots of kids. I hope you're getting good feedback as a board from the community regarding this program. Public school infrastructure fund, this has been around for a little bit, but, and I sent you some information today on that, I neglected to include that yesterday, but long and short of it is, there's some funds available. available made up of unused revenue from a year ago, and that's been dedicated toward addressing immediate safety needs of school buildings, as well as some other part of that funding has been used to help match E-Rate support for technology. So I certainly am open to suggestions. Crystal and I have been working on this a little bit, Dale as well, unless you tell me not to, I will submit some requests through the state to at least, in the case of Lakeway, address some, some of the most pressing immediate needs, some of the heating issues, electrical issues. I think this is awkward for us. I think that we just need to understand that going up front. You know, I think that any time something is done to improve the present there, it seems to somehow, somehow endanger the future. Case in point, the Safe Rouse to Schools grant, which was several years in the development, many years in the development, five, six years in the development, actually, if not more, and really made the front of the building look much different, much nicer. But the fact is that even though the front looks nice, we still have the same issues when we go inside of the building with the heating controls, with the lack of electrical service to some places, with the continuing concerns and, or monitoring with the second floor and so on. So that's something I'll be working on and asking for some input. NEAS accreditation, Jennifer and I'll be talking with them tomorrow, but that's currently scheduled to go on in 2019, after a year of a year's extension. In your documents, there's a report from the state, from the commissioner, regarding our special education program, the CIM report. And you'll notice in the letter, it says we weren't selected to be studied and have an onsite study and pulling files and so on, but they did want to share with us the results from their perspective, our special services programs, specifically special education, and no, a bunch of zeros in this, in this kind of a, in this kind of a report, zero is good. Zero means you have no complaints, no non-compliance, no 000 across the board with that program. So congratulations not only to Kelly, but the building principals, the teachers, those that make the program go. Fire marshal reports are on the drive. The Chief Mercieri submitted these reports a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, and since he's here, if there's any, want to engage in any questions or anything regarding those, I think one of the, you know, there's several things that certainly jumped out to me that I think we're taking some steps to address, like freeing up some, making one of our storage areas more able to handle some of the things that shouldn't be stored over at the academy, for instance, in that upper floor. But we always appreciate his support. I think, I think he does a good job of, you know, it's hard, making sure that we're in compliance and that we're following the guidelines, but also giving us reasonable time to comply and to work, and so, Chief, thank you for your support. So I'm going to have a couple of, well, before, any questions? I don't know if you ever, anyone had a chance to look at those reports in much detail besides the facilities committee?
I haven't totally read them, but maybe that other program from the state could address some of those concerns.
Yeah.
As part of the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a big one in Lakeway with the alarm, you know, that we might want to, we might want to stick into that grant. Clearly, that's a safety-related issue. It's an immediate need. So there's some things there that are helpful, I think, with that, certainly. And speaking of Lakeway, Warren Street Architects, working with Jonathan Hale, have not heard from him. Hope to hear from him again. We still made some follow-up contacts, but as the board directed me some weeks ago to follow up on the earlier work done by that firm regarding what it would take, what needs to be done to bring the building up to standards educationally as well as safety is a first, is a first step in this process, so as the town and community decides what direction they want to go with that facility and program, whether it's putting money into the existing structure and fixing things there, or other options. And that's all I have.
Anything else? Ralph, you said you wanted to do it.
Yeah. I just want to take a minute. I've been attending these meetings now for a year. A year ago, when that tax rate bumped up there, of course, I went ballistic and I went out at everybody in town. But I didn't know anything about town. I knew nothing about it, and that's what I've been doing. I've been attending all the zoning boards, the planning boards, the selectmen, your meetings, every meeting I can attend, I've been attending, and learning everything I can. And I just want to say right now that I really believe that you guys have the taxpayer in mind. I didn't think, when I saw that budget last year, that anybody cared about the taxpayer. But I really believe now that you guys have got the taxpayer in mind, and as a taxpayer, I really appreciate the work that you guys have done for last year's budget and next year's budget as we're going forward, making sure the kids are well taken care of and the taxpayers are representative. So I just want to take a minute to say thank you. I really appreciate what you've done over the past year, and I know that you guys got us in mind, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Could have had three minutes for that one.
Without that being said, I think I need a motion to go over the public...
It's on the drive of the stage.
I see your positive comment.
There you go. Want this one?
Yeah, please.
Whoops.
Just a reminder, we have the Veterans Celebration.
Yes.
That's right.
Oh, you did mention that.
I should have mentioned that.
1:30?
1:30.
1:30 Thursday.
Received a very nice invitation. And two, and I wanted to comment on the soccer program too. Two north country teams going down there, competing against each other. It's pretty, pretty good. I mean, two great soccer teams there, for my area. I'm dead.
Like the basketball finals, that was just a couple of north country teams as well. Are we still, is the tape still rolling, Dale? All right. So by the time people see this on channel two, it'll be after the fact, but, yeah, we, but the Veterans Day program will be, will be done, and we're pleased to host that again.
So it's, yeah, it's always well done.
Honor the people that are veterans.
There's other schools asking about our program.
Yep.
Thank you, Tom, for putting that on Facebook too. That was helpful.
Yep, pretty awesome.
All right. I'll make a motion, enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A colon three of the right to no law, for number two, the hiring of any person as a public employee, number three, matters that would reverse the effect of the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us, Superintendent?
Tom and Patty.
Tom and Patty.
Unless somebody else wants anybody else's?
Y'all lost it.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Greg Cook.
Kim Watson.
Millie Nelson.
Jim Evans.
And Morgan.